Mr. Blair, would you please lead us in prayer?
First, let me thank all of you who are willing to serve. Because too often it's hard to get people that are willing to serve. Appreciate it. Father, we come before your presence on behalf of these people who are meeting here today, asking for guidance, asking for help, asking for peace and harmony that it will exist here and throughout our community. Praying that you will lead us and direct us, that we will honor those things which you have left for us, those things which you left for the benefit of mankind. May we look to them, may we incorporate them in our lives. And we ask for these people who have to make decisions that you will be with them, especially whenever some of those decisions are very difficult to make, that you will help them, that there will be clarity in their thought, and that they will demonstrate those things that you have said and you have left for mankind, so that mankind can benefit from them. We ask your blessing also upon those who are here today. We're thankful for the interest of people, and we pray for the community as a whole, that we will work together, that we will cooperate with each other, and that things will be better. I have lived here many years, Lord, and I love this community, love to see this community do well. And we ask it in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Call this meeting of Fayette County Commissioners to order. Stand for pledgehold.
(Inaudible)
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from the last meeting? If it's not as for motion to stand proof, it's written.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Mr. Parker, EDG Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, sir, how are you?
Good, good. I apologize for my abrupt departure. Last time I was here, early January, we had a cataclysmic event with the water sprinkler system at the building between 18th and 21st Street that I had to attend to. At that time, we were considering going forward with an action, and so I'm here today to pick that back up. I think I'll look to Colin to make sure, are we okay this morning, Colin, to go forward?
As far as I know.
Okay. Commissioner, what we're kindly requesting is that you convey in consideration of the amount shown, I think, on the documents that you may have before you. You done?
It would be a dollar for the conveyance of the property. That's what had been done in the past. I have the documents ready. If you said you want to do it today, if not, that's gonna...
So we're respectfully asking that we could convey 5480 Industrial Avenue to the Economic Development Corp.
Don't worry, he forgot his phone, too.
Yeah. It's gonna be one of those days.
Do we have any discussion?
The only thing, the only question I have, what did you say the address was again, Dan?
5480.
5480.
It would be the...
Western Avenue?
Uh, no.
No, it's the industrial.
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 Avenue.
Industrial Avenue.
It would be the property, just as you cross the tracks to go to the airport to the left, property there. It's a power rail business currently owns that, or owns the building.
I guess my only concern, I understand that it's been done in the past for a dollar, conveyed to the economic development, but I guess I would be more interested in the county receiving at least appraised value out of that property, just so that it gives, it goes back into the land acquisition funds for future purchases of property, so that we can continue, we have funds there to continue to purchase future properties for any industrial or retail growth that might be there. But that's only my opinion. I mean, I know we have done that in the past. Also, properties have been conveyed at an appraised value to those companies. So I, but that's one man's opinion, so...
Well, I believe we need to turn it over to them and help them get started in a new business to help our community, so I'll make the motion to approve selling it to, who is it? The EDG?
Yeah.
Industrial Avenue at 5480, for a dollar.
I second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two ayes.
Thank you. And Gary, I respect your feelings.
That's just my thoughts, Dan.
And I completely respect that.
I'd like to say, I do believe what Gary's saying, but I think at this time, for this particular reason, we need to let this one go the way it has been doing.
We're kind of in an unprecedented situation with our economy in Fayette County, not unlike the other economies in our surrounding counties, where we're doing everything we can to retain business, and this is linked to a choo-choo train of events that are, that include this business. Without getting too specific, I've said again, as soon as we get some state applications filed, I'll be chirping like a canary about what's going on to make everyone aware. I will gladly share with you guys, and I think I have somewhat privately, what's going on. The other thing, there are some, not completely related, but some are related to that part of the industrial park. There is some movement going on behind the scenes of changing ownership, I just made aware of last night, and some consolidation and expansion. Again, maybe some state applications made. Probably our next meeting, it will be public knowledge by that time. But these are good signs and good indicators that we're gaining and not losing. We are retaining and adding jobs, both central in the old industrial park and out north. And it's through these types of transactions that we're going to continue to bolster and increase and strengthen our position in the industrial park. A lot of words, say, hey, we're doing a lot better, and I expect us to do even better as time progresses.
Well, I appreciate the fact that this will go back on the tax rolls.
It will, it will.
It becomes, makes it available for this company to go ahead and sell their building, because a lot of people don't have a lot of interest in buying a building that they don't own the ground that it's sitting on.
Exactly.
And it will be on the tax roll, so...
And they have invested considerable amount of money in that building since they've owned it, so I think from a benefit standpoint, the county will, in the end, come out a winner. Is there any questions you have for me? If not, I appreciate your help and appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
The only, only thing I would say about it is, the reason we're able to do it is because we're transferring property to a nonprofit. That's why we don't need the appraisals, we can do it for basically a dollar, for however much we want to do it. So that's why we're able to transfer the property. And I have a document here that we can sign to do that. The deed is not prepared yet, I can do that ASAP, but just so everything's okay, our basis is covered.
You'll have an ordinance ready?
I actually have an ordinance ready, but the deed, quit claiming the property, is not.
So do we need a motion to...
Yeah, to pass the ordinance, and it's exactly what you already made the motion on earlier, is convey it for a dollar to EDG.
So do you feel that we need a separate motion, or...
Sure, to pass the ordinance, I think that'd be appropriate. Do you want to take a look at it? It's the same one, none of them.
I accept a motion to approve this ordinance, for this transfer of this property.
I'll make a motion to...
I second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two ayes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
You'll number that, Jen?
Yes. All right. Mr. Corr, do you have anything for us today?
Not really.
Well, I noticed you weren't in dark bold print, so I didn't notice, but I did see you sitting there, so I let you talk.
We took him around the culverts on 300, 200 sides, 225, we got about 16 of them in place, I believe, before we started paving. The last time I knew, it was in his relies, which was the start on that. That's what we wanted to establish. That might be a mess, kind of, the intersection there at 200 and the half a hill, that whole intersection's gonna have to come up, because I don't know what they did back in the day, but there's a white pipe that's right in the center of it that's collapsing, so I don't know what they had in mind. But it's all had to come out there and did it the right way, I guess. We parked our number eight truck, the bugle eight truck, we had parked it, the cab was coming off the frame, but we got another truck we converted over into our Brian trucks, so they're not just now, we got one right now.
So if, if we're gonna tear that whole intersection out, wouldn't we make our whole Frank's roundabout?
Yeah, you have to make them.
Figure something out.
Other than that, thanks.
Thanks for wanting to roundabouts about.
Is it?
Yeah.
We don't like those.
I don't think so, Frank doesn't either.
He doesn't either.
He's been taking me to Indianapolis and to Carmel, to the doctors' appointments, and the language he uses as we go around the roundabout cannot be recorded. No, I'm just saying, Frank doesn't talk like that. I'm being facetious here. Okay.
Unless you guys have got something else, that's about it.
You and I have to have a conference on...
Frontier?
Frontier, and that crazy culvert that they say you did something wrong, and they want me to pay for it, and I don't want it.
It's been an issue for the last two years, I don't know what's going on with them, to be honest with you.
They've got a lawyer involved now, so...
Well, we've got our pitchers, and so we'll just compare it to them. I don't know if it's, 811, I think, is the ones that's making mistakes. They're marking out lines.
They can pay for it, because since they didn't mark it correctly, whatever. Anyway, we'll talk with Colin.
Richard, did I see in the claims, do we have the Dura-Patcher's out and back to using them?
Not yet, but we're getting ready to get them out.
Because I saw some emulsion on one of the claims for Marathon. There was a claim from Marathon.
Was it emulsion, or emulsion, or cold mix?
I just assumed it was emulsion. It said Marathon emulsion or something on the claim, or...
I know we ain't got any emulsion here yet, but...
Okay, I was just hoping.
Once this weather breaks, we've got a lot to do.
The Dura-Patcher's back out.
Yeah.
Because they make it more permanent than your cold mix.
Oh, yeah. A lot better and smoother, too.
Yeah. And that was the purpose of having the tank down there, so we could have it all winter, so...
All righty.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard.
Anyway, I'll give you a call, and we'll discuss this other situation.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bill.
The air handler at the jail, we got it back up and everything's running. We had the shaft made locally, and it was reasonable. And Gary had a question of maybe getting a shaft made up in advance. They're all different, Gary. I looked at them, and they're all different.
That makes a lot of sense.
We replaced the, we replaced the pulleys on this to speed it up. I got it speeded up as fast as it'll go without burning a motor out. So we'll wait and see what the inspector says on that side. We can do it with the rest of the air handlers. I made a difference, I mean, the motor's faster. On the glass, I'm still waiting on mirrors. They come back and measured again last week, the week before that. So I've been calling, trying to get this glass in. I mean, all I want them to do is deliver it to me. We're gonna install it ourselves. I just need the glass.
Have we paid for the...
I haven't checked. Do you know? We have paid it. Okay, that...
Do we need, do we need to get Colin involved, Dan?
Mark spoke to him a few times.
Maybe speak to him again, and let him know that we need that glass. Because I've talked to Rick and talked to Rick, and I just, I... When he came down and re-measured, I thought, where did your measurements go? He said a man had quit and took the measurements with him.
I think we probably ought to have Colin send them a letter or something, Rick.
Yeah.
Because you talk...
We got, we need that glass. We're gonna get dinged on again, for sure.
And we've already paid for it?
Yeah, the sheriff says we've already paid for it.
Okay.
I got a bill this morning...
So we can't be ordering it from somebody else.
Right, I got a bill, well, I wish they got it.
I've talked to them three or four times. Well, I thought you... Well, you don't pay no attention, man. You say they'll get back with you, but they haven't.
I got a bill this morning from Duke Energy, and I'm, they're not, they haven't got all the lights replaced, so nothing's gonna be done with that until, and I've called them and told them, so we're waiting on that. The other bad news I got is we got a motor in the courthouse, in the air handlers, up in the attic, one of the big ones. This is, you're talking 300, 400 pound motor. This is one that I warned them about going out years ago, and we got three of them up there. But we're gonna have to have a crane to come in, put this motor up there. I'm waiting on numbers. Right now, the bearings are going out, so we're okay, as long as we don't lose those bearings. And I'll keep it greased and keep the belts tight until, but I'm waiting on numbers. And as soon as we get the numbers, we're gonna have to work on this, because...
You're just folding it in.
I'm sorry. But this is, I mean, this is something that I warned them about years ago.
And the last meeting you missed because you had to put tires on your truck, right?
Yeah, yeah. Other than that, no more bad news.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Levonda?
Good morning.
Hi, how are you?
Here to present, I'm okay, how are you? I'm here to present a 144 form for a part-time employee, the former employee that we had. She's homeschooling personally, right? And it was becoming too difficult for her to be committed to this, and she's willing to start tomorrow if everything is approved, so...
Do you have her name?
Darcy Ferrera. F as in Frank, E-R-R-E-I-R-A.
I'd make a motion to approve the 144. Do you have hours and whatnot, Jane, that is allowed?
It's an hourly provision, 866 an hour.
Is there...
Right now, it's budgeted for about, it averages 13 and a half hours.
13 and a half hours a week, okay. I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
We just want to make sure that we stay within that budgeted amount.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Lockman?
Good morning.
Hi, Sheriff, how are you?
Good, how are you guys? Only thing I have is in reference to a vehicle, we are looking to purchase another truck. Have two bids here, I also have the state bid on the Dodge Rams is the type of vehicle we're trying to get. Reidman's gave us a quote, it's the same type we've bought the past three years, the base package for a Dodge Ram. The quoted price is $41,355 now, with incentives from, the special fleet incentives from Ram, that'll take the price down to $25,980. I called Advantage Ford to get a similar type quote from them on an F-150, excuse me, police package. The, little bit of difference between the two trucks, but their quote come in at $32,089.14. There is a quote on there for a spotlight for $523, that could be removed. The SSV that's listed there, that's for the, for it being a police package, so, so you can see there's a little bit of difference in the prices. The state bid on the Rams is $25,423.25, so Reidman's is within $500 of the state bid, so my inclination is to go with Reidman's. Obviously, there's a difference in price. We've had good luck with the Rams, not had much difficulty with them at all, so, and there's...
What is the oldest one you've got in the plate?
We have one that has 70,000, 75,000 miles on it. I think Bobby Revley has, so they're, and that's five years old, I believe, so, yeah. So they're, they're not being driven much off duty at all. Obviously, out of state, or out of county, they're not allowed to do that, but just a few of us take them out of the county. Obviously, myself, if I'm in Indianapolis and something happens here, I'm gonna have to leave doing whatever I'm doing in the country, so... So mileage is good on all of them. They've been very durable. It's, it's worked out really well.
Realistically, do you see another three years on Bobby's? Two years? I mean, what are you, what are you looking at mechanically?
Probably two, and I should point out, too...
On the trucks compared to the cruisers?
We're not replacing front ends like we were on the old Crown Vics. We tried Chargers, did not like the Charger. That thing was in bad shape. We were done, trade-in value was almost nil on it. So the trucks, like I said, have been way more durable. We're just not having the issues we were having. And gas prices stay the way they're, they have. It's, we're not asking for a bunch of additionals for gas, so it's, it's working out. And there's other things that they've been used for, other agencies that would tell you it's nice that we have trucks, especially with the weather, the way it's been, and there's been some, some instances where those trucks have had to be used to transport some things that I can't really mention here, but it was very needed in that time. But this, this truck, I should note, will be given to Kyle McMurray. He'll be our new K-9 officer. Should be getting that K-9. We'll go look at the K-9 April 3rd, and he'll go to six weeks of training beginning the next week. So we're gonna give this vehicle to him, so it will grow with him. Usually, the K-9 officer has always been given the junk vehicle, and then you have to switch out the cage the next year, and the next year, I want this vehicle, cage to go in it, and it'll, it'll age with the dog, so...
So you'll, you'll cage the backseat?
Yes.
Like a, like a car?
Yes.
You would a car? And not do something in the van?
You can't have the dog right outside. What's wrong with you?
Is there gonna be a, you spoke of trade-in value, is there gonna be a trade-in vehicle on this?
Still trying to determine. We use some of those older Durango's for transports. We're still doing a ton of inmate transports, so sometimes when the jail has to do one after hours, but there's a few not great trade-in value for those, I don't think, but, and it may even be, I'll leave that up to you guys, it may be even better for you guys to auction those off than to just trade them in.
Well, and you and I talked about a potential auction.
Yes, sir.
Did you get an inventory, have you worked on an inventory yet?
Yeah, it's grown a little bit, because there's some seized vehicles from the, yeah, but we have, we have something, so if you guys want to work on a, setting that up, we can work together and try to get some of those out of that back parking lot, but there may be a few...
How about confiscated vehicles? Will there be?
Yes, yes, yeah.
For sale?
Yeah.
Ready for sale?
There's about four or five, I believe, that we...
And we can handle that through the regular county sale, can't we?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And there's great interest in a few. We actually have a truck that we had given to the Boy Scout camp that they gave back to us, and I've probably had 10 phone calls on that that said, and the...
The Dodge?
Yes.
I've had, I've got one guy that calls me monthly.
Yeah, yeah.
Wanted to know what we're gonna be with.
Yeah, so I think there'll, there'll be some good interest, and probably can make a little money off of those instead of trading them in, and, I mean, we're not gonna get much value out of them. The remaining balance, I should point out, too, that we're looking to buy probably another Impala for a transport vehicle, for Ryan Yak, to our transport officer, he's all over the state in that vehicle, and it's probably about time to replace that. So the remaining balance should be around 13 that we'll have, so I'm looking for something there, too. So that'll probably be the next vehicle I bring forth to you guys, is something in that vein, a new transport vehicle.
How soon will you be receiving this vehicle?
I'm not sure, it always, never as soon...
Or can get it.
Never as soon as we want them, because they do build them. I'm hoping, hopefully, next month, I'm hoping, so...
If we go, okay.
Yeah, if you guys...
I'd make a motion that we approve the Reidman quote and have him get that ordered. I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. King?
Morning.
Good morning, Michael.
Okay, I gave you copies, I didn't try to get those in your box last night, but I didn't get back to your office. I was in my office for about 10 minutes yesterday, doing things at the city and going all over the place. First thing, we have a Metronet sheet there, that's the MACDA paperwork for another phone for the jail. I just need to get that signed, that's how we did the front side, the backside door the signature is. That will add another phone for the person handling the sex offender registry and all that stuff there. The current phone that was being used by that officer, which is Leslie Green, he's the court officer, they're moving him into another office in the jail. He only does the sex offender registry so many hours a week, and they brought this other person in to handle it 24 hours a week. That's gonna be her full job, is dealing with that sex offender registry. So she'll need a phone, and that's what that's there. Basically adds 13 bucks a month, whereas $12.95 a month for the seat that handles the voicemail, all this stuff that goes with it, so... So if I can get approval on that...
I'd make a motion for approval.
Okay.
Mark. It's up to you.
I second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two ayes.
Okay, the next sheet, obviously, is a quick slapdash monthly report. I didn't get a chance to pull the phone calls as far as how many calls we have in and out of the system, but I imagine it was still staying around the 70,000-ish number that we've been kind of hovering at. Emails were down for the month, we only had around... Emails were down for the month, we only had around, uh, let's see, it doesn't show the total in here. Doesn't show the total number, but it's forty-seven, forty-seven thousand that were allowed in, basically twenty-four thousand that were blocked, so only about ninety thousand, or seventy thousand, anyway. The breakdown on tickets for the month, total tickets was two hundred and twenty-six, um, hu, a hundred and eighty of those were for the county, so, and then forty-four for the city, and two for public, where somebody called in with information for the website and that kind of thing. Okay, then we get into the, the copiers craziness that's been going on. The jail copier, as I told you two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, died. Joey pulled, decided to pay for that at a commissary and, and got his taken care of. The two bids were from Rico and from Toshiba. Toshiba's was slightly, this, that's not the paperwork I have in front of me, since he went ahead and ordered it and signed it and everything, since it was under his discretionary funds for the commissary, I didn't bring a copy here. But it was about three hundred dollars difference, um, much like the clerk quote that's there in front of you. The difference basically boiled down to is, he went with Rico because we've done business with Rico, we haven't had anything with Toshiba, we've had good luck with Rico with their service, um, so we just kinda wanted to stick with the devil we know kinda thing. They're giving a good cost per copy, and I think it will save us, from the rough numbers that I pulled from what bills that Beth had handed, we're gonna save roughly sixty dollars a month or so, just on the cost per copy over what we were paying with Office Shop. Cause they were paying, I wanna say it was one point two cents per black and white copy, and they were doing about three thousand copies a month, and Rico's gonna charge us half a cent per copy, so it's gonna save us there. The two quotes that I have there is the Toshiba and the Rico that I handed out, out to you. The purchase price on the Toshiba is fifty-five hundred and sixty-nine, or a hundred and nine dollars a month, the, um, so the total on that is, I'm sorry, I don't have it here in front of me, but, total on that would be, um. We go with the lease, it will be sixty-eight hundred and seventy-six. The one from Rico, it's a, instead of a sixty-three month lease like Toshiba quoted out, it is a thirty-six month lease with one dollar buyout, and that thirty-six months is a hundred and sixty-four eighty-five for each month. So it's fifty-nine hundred and thirty-four sixty for the lease with Rico, but it's only a thirty-six month. That's right of what we're paying now for the one that we're currently leasing from them for the clerk's office, we paid four ninety-eight a quarter for them. It's basically the same machine they're using right now, personally, I recommend that we go with the Rico, again, it's the devil we know. They already use basically that machine, it's gonna be, they use a, they have a forty-five oh-three, this is a forty-five oh-four, it's just the next model up for the new year. But that way they don't have to be retrained, or all of their current processes and understanding of it work. For the average month, this is also a much bigger machine than the, the problem is when they get to poll books, they get to, I use, I print the jury letters up there, well, the jury letters, there's two thousand jury letters that go out, three pages double-sided. So you, I go through a case of paper, ten thousand sheets, easy. Well, when you start burning through those copies like that, you burn out the machine real fast. So I would recommend going with Rico's quote, which is the, uh, let's see, forty-five oh-four E four, and I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't print off that, copy that sheet for you, but it's one sixty-four eighty-five a month with a one dollar buyout at the end of thirty-six months. And I'll have actual paperwork to bring for assigning and approval next meeting, I just wanted to recommend we go with that one, that I can get that process going.
I'd make a recommendation, or I, I'd make a motion that we go with Michael's recommendation on Rico, um, copying machine for the clerk's office current?
Yes, clerk's office.
Sheriff's already bought his, right?
Sheriff's bought his.
With, with Michael's recommendations.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
So I brought the, um, I've kinda gone around and looked at the old copiers that we've gotten squirreled away over the years, um, for the most part, they're all dead. I mean, some of them will print, but you have to futz with them so much to get them to print, that it makes it a complete productivity killer, so, um, I would like permission to, I don't, I'm not sure if we have to send those to auction, since they're non-functional, I think we can just get rid of them, but that would be.
I would think so, cause you're junk.
Yeah.
Everybody wants.
Yeah, so if, but if you guys give me approval, I'll get with corrections and have them take them out to the transfer station, um, just to get rid of them.
I'd, I'd make a motion that we, um, get rid of it, any office equipment that is not of any value, obsolete. I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, that we dispose of all uncomparable equipment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
So I know we've got at least one in the audit, auditor's office, three in the basement of jail, if not four.
There are a bunch of junk down the basement.
Yeah, two down here, no, the, some of this computer stuff that I've got downstairs, we're slowly either recycling or scrapping out, and when we scrap out a computer, the only thing that really goes off to, uh, the transfer station is the motherboard and the case, we, we pretty much take out all the other parts as the, we may use this someday.
I got a bunch of that at my bar.
Well, it, it's coming handy, just in the last month, we've, we've, uh, fixed four computers out of the, those junk parts.
Yeah.
So, the, uh, final issue, I did not have a chance to, to figure out the quotes completely, I've gotta bring it next meeting, the DCR quotes for the Superior Court, um, BIS Digital has a quote of roughly seventy-four hundred dollars, or seventy-five hundred dollars, and uh, the other quotes that came in were eleven thousand, and twelve thousand, and six thousand, so I'm trying to figure out apples to apples to make sure that we're going with the right thing. I am leaning toward BIS though, because that's the same software that we have in Circuit Court, and having the same in both places would be advantageous, um, so that if they have to switch courts one day for some reason, they can just do that.
Yeah.
So, and the final thing that I need to get approval on, as word of your blessing, not so much approval needed, um, the assessor's office uses their copier for printing everything. Now, I had emailed you about a big printer that the treasurer's office had in their office that was in their way, we didn't find a place for that in the assessor's office, so they can use that in there. My question is, is there any objection to, if need be, switching the assessor's copier with the treasurer's copier? They're the same model, but the treasurer doesn't print nearly as much out of it, and...
If they can get some more life on them.
Yeah, just basically switch them around, because the assessor's office previously has used their, their copier for all their printing in the office, so they've pretty much worked theirs to the bone. On, me? Okay.
Whatever gets the most life.
Yeah, so, that's all I need, any questions for me?
Just change it on their, uh.
Just change it on the inventory basis.
Inventory, put it in the right department, make sure that we've got the right piece of whatever.
Michael, I, I've noticed, slowly, but surely I've noticed that some small things over the last year, for instance, our telephone, some of our claims are paid to Comcast, some of them are Metronet, what?
Comcast goes out to the highway garage, whereas Metronet does not, um, that's why they've got Comcast.
Okay. Is it normal for the highway department to have a five hundred and thirty dollar monthly phone bill?
I have no idea, I don't know.
I mean, does that sound?
I know they have business internet, and I know they have.
I mean, maybe it covers more than just a telephone.
Yeah, they, I think it covers their phone, their internet, their, um, their internet and phone at the other building, and maybe a cable, TV cable that they use for like their weather video and stuff, that would be more of a Richard, he and you kinda question, I'm not really sure what all they have in there, but it does include all that stuff.
Okay, well, that's a little different then, I, I just thought that sounded awful high for just a telephone.
Yeah, and I know Comcast, we also have that, them downstairs in the health department, and that was kind of a isolated network kind of issue for HIPAA, I think, is why that was set up that way.
Okay.
So that they're completely separate from everything in here, um, so that it covers all the HIPAA laws as far as who has access to
Exactly.
that network.
It's a little different situation down there.
Yeah, could we change that? Possibly, but that's the way it is right now, so. As far as projects for the month, I've been trying to work on a new ticket system, um, the one that we have now, it, pardon, it's a webpage, it works fairly well, but it's not very fast. So I kinda, I, I don't wanna spend two hours every day trying to put my paperwork in, um, while I'm spending all these hours working on my computers. So I've got that, and we're trying, trying to improve the inventory database to allow us to get better reports, get more information in that we need, so. Any questions for me besides that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Redmond?
Morning.
Good morning.
I've turned in mine as one forty-four, uh, to hire a new employee, since I heard the one resigned. Uh, his name is Jackie Johnson.
I'm sorry?
Jackie Johnson.
Jack?
Jackie.
Jackie, no.
Johnson, yeah. Uh, me and Bill, we interviewed a few, a few of them together, uh, Bill helped me out, and then we discussed it, and this is the one that we felt that would suit the decision real good. I'll get any good approval on that one.
All right. Do they have to have a background check?
I have no idea.
Can you get a background check on that? We can get one.
We can get one.
Okay, I think that's a good idea, because since you made, you called different people.
What we'll do is, we'll, we'll contact him, clear it with him, make, get his okay, and then we can go right through the sheriff's department.
Sheriff or David.
Say it where sheriff you want.
Yeah. Can check.
It's probably easier to go through the jail.
It probably is, yeah.
Yeah. We'll get it approved with the.
Pending, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, we can get that done today.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get it.
I'll move to the one forty-four with the background check. I'd second that.
Been moved and seconded with background check.
I forgot about it too, I should, I should have, I forgot.
Just, I, I, I just think we'd be safer to do it, being that you go on private property from time to time.
All right.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Then we, you wanna do the furnace thing today?
Yeah.
Leota? Okay. We, we wanna change over that furnace over to a natural gas furnace, so we can try to save money on our bill. I got three quotes, one was from Carnsville Heating and Cooling, uh, that was forty-two ninety-six, uh, that was, uh, for ninety percent gas furnace, for gas furnace. Then I got the Dick Hills, it was, uh, same percentage on, on the furnace, ninety-five percent, uh, that price was for the furnace only, would have been forty-five ninety-six eighty-three. If we, if we had the air conditioning with it, it would have been thirty-six ninety-three seventeen, that's, plus that.
It's almost eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Then we got a quote from K&amp;K Electric, we're keeping our air conditioner, they're gonna tie into our other furnace up there, we just keep the air conditioner, we're, and they're gonna unhook the electric part of the furnace, and we just keep the AC in there. But there's gonna be a, about a, a shut-off thing there, whenever we run the air, it don't go in the back end, so we don't lose it from, but the door's open during the summertime. That quote was for thirty-eight forty-seven forty-five, uh, that is our cheaper quote there, cheapest one that we got right now. It's a Bryant gas furnace, uh, that's everything together, their labor and all.
Dave, are we comparing the same BTUs furnaces to each other? Uh, that, that's my concern here, I, I understand they're all ninety-five percent efficient, but I, I'm just wondering if they're the same sized furnaces? Cause that's quite a price difference, I mean, between the Carnival Heating and, and K&amp;K, and I, I wondered if it was.
Well, K&amp;K, uh.
The same BTUs or not?
Yeah.
I don't think it had the BTU listed on there.
It doesn't have it in the quotes, it doesn't have it on the quotes, that's why I'm mad.
Uh, I could check into that and make sure, if you want to, and make sure what the BTUs is on that.
I, I think we need to, because, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong.
We need another BTU, but that, if you got a cheaper furnace than a BTU or, or lower, then you're not gonna, you're not gonna heat the building, it's gonna take more gas.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to find out what's, make sure they're, they're the same.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll get that information for you, and get it turned in. Okay, I'm, sorry about that, isn't it?
Well, I, I just got to thinking about it, I, I thought, well, the, they could sell us a less BTU furnace and, and come in cheaper, and then it has to work harder to heat the facility.
Yeah, okay, I'll get that, I'll check that out, check that out for you and get it turned in as soon as I can get it, okay?
All right.
Can we go ahead and make a motion to approve that as long as the BTUs match, that you can get this done? Or get off the propane?
I'll make a motion to approve if BTUs match it.
The K&amp;K bid?
Yeah. I'd second that, pending the BTU.
All right, I'll get that information as soon as I can get it up here for you.
Okay, been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you can go ahead, as long as BTU, sir. Okay.
All right, thank you, that's all I got, you got any, anything, questions?
Thank you, Dave, I appreciate it.
I don't see Paul up here.
She had a one forty-four?
I had one of my wife's mail, she's coming.
Oh, come, okay.
Mr. Jed?
I don't have anything today.
Okay. You have any mail, Jane?
Um, Senator Rats replied to your letter regarding the insurance bill.
Thank you for sharing your concern regarding SP two-ten, I voted for this bill in committee without prior knowledge of your concerns. There was what appeared to be an acceptable, agreeable solution between insurance lobby and the author of the bill that made it palatable for me to support the bill, which is most concerned to me, is when a patient is given prior authorization for a specific procedure, and then has a procedure and the insurance company then refuses to pay for the procedure. Additionally, it is my understanding that generally the hospital then essentially covers the cost of the refused payment for the procedure. It's also my opinion that we will all bear the cost of the insurance company's refusal to honor their pledge to cover the cost of the procedure. If the hospital eats the cost, then I assume they pass the extra cost on to all of their patients. In light of the definition that I have shared, I vote for the bill. I'll certainly take into consideration your sentiments as the bill will come back to the Senate near the end of the session. Thank you for sharing your concerns.
And that was from Senator?
Senator Rats.
And that was reference to the letter?
That we got from Apex.
That we sent to them?
Yes.
Encouraging them to reconsider that bill.
In old business, we have Cory's bid and the bids for the lawn mowers, for the mowing of the cemeteries, and the cemetery commission approved Cory's bid, the other bid was very excessive, and they've been in contact with Cory, he was at their meeting yesterday, and they've agreed on some things that they were unhappy with his.
They also had two candidates for the Cemetery Commission. We've worked with a shortened board for several years, and we will have a complete board. Rebecca St. Clair and Amanda Stevens agreed to serve on that board.
I'd make a motion to approve that, those appointments. I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. We accept Cory's bid?
How much what? How much was it?
Do you know right off, Jane?
It's like, around twenty-two thousand. The other one was like sixty or seventy thousand or something. It was way, way off. Somebody from Rushville, I don't even remember who it was, but Cory's was about forty thousand dollars cheaper, so it's less expensive, much less expensive.
Jeff, those numbers should be in the last meetings.
That was for a year, right?
Yes.
Year of eighteen.
From April through October thirty-first.
I'm pulling it up here, give me a second.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Do you need the other bid, Jeff?
What was it?
Give me a second.
You'd already went back, didn't you?
A total of sixty-one thousand six hundred.
They also had two candidates for the Cemetery Commission. We've worked with a shortened board for several years, and we will have a complete board. Rebecca St. Clair and Amanda Stevens agreed to serve on that board.
I'd make a motion to approve that, those appointments. I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve those appointments. All papers say aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. New business, Mr. Baker?
No, there's Paula.
Oh, Paula?
Hey.
We've been, we went ahead and...
That's my lady. I have a 144 to present for our overdose pilot grant administrator position for Craig Pennington, is who we have gotten for that position.
Did you run up here? I was going to say...
I did.
Catch your breath.
Shoot.
There is an elevator, isn't there?
Yeah. Been back and forth to the printer several times to print this bad boy.
Give us the rundown on what that is going to consist of, again, hours and so on and so forth.
It's about twenty, twenty-five hours a week. It's a temporary, totally grant-funded position for one year, actually nine months. It is until September first is when it, or August thirty-first is when it's over. It is to help coordinate all of the overdose statistics, and get all the overdose numbers compiled into one area, and to help coordinate an overdose response plan for the county, and get information together for the state, so they can hopefully compile the, there's five counties that are in the pilot, and they'll compile that information that's gathered from them, and hopefully be able to form a response plan for the whole state.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve the 144 from the Health Department. Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. All papers say aye?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Next time, you don't have to run.
Thank you. Mr. Baker?
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, sir.
Hi. I have a 911 report for 2017. As you know, we serve two law enforcement agencies, four fire departments, three of which are volunteer, and then EMS plus the transfer service. We have five full-time employees and eleven part-time. Eleven part-time is a little bit misleading in the sense that two of those people are what I call backventures, in that, I don't, when's the last time Devin Munson worked? It's been a while, and so, he might work, let's say, six shifts a year, and Kevin Perry, police officer, Connersville City Police Officer, has been very useful for us, because he's filled in some very tricky shifts where, where we just needed coverage, and he stepped up and took him. So, it's handy to have people like that. Our radios, our consoles, installed in 2011, Motorola MCC 5500 is the model. They were upgraded to P-25, that's probably stuff you don't need to know, Gary might be interested, back in 2016. Currently have vendor, Motorola vendors ERS, and their contract expires in May 2018. Our 911 system, Indigital, backup phones, Nevo, that's in case. What those are for is, in the event that the phones go down, it's a, it's an emergency phone that sits on this little shelf, it's run by Indigital. They're the ones that check them out, make sure they're still working. It's a, it's a sort of a nuclear option phone, if that's a good way to, that's a good way of thinking about it. And then, we have text to 911. You've probably heard the ads on the radio for, "Call is best, but when you need to, text." That, we have that, and we have some statistics of how many of those we received this year. It's a very good, it's a very good option for people. It's sort of taking the place, we used to have a, we have a little keyboard, and people that were hearing impaired would contact us through that equipment. And a lot of times, the way, the way the messages come through can be very confusing, so the text is a lot, is a more modern way to get that information in, and it's just, the response and the understanding by the dispatcher of the person is just so much better, because it's more in plain English. So that's, the text to 911 thing is a very good thing.
So do we still use the old system?
We, it's there, and we're, as I understand it, we're sort of required to have it, but I do foresee it being phased out, because the people, people that are, you know, just, I'm guessing fifty and under, that are hearing impaired, are tending to go with text. It's just a lot more intuitive, user-friendly, they have it in their hand, and they can text, so. A recorder is Equiture. What that is, is that at the dispatch consoles, they can listen to the radio traffic that just happened. They can go back and hit, in case they don't hear, or for whatever reason. And, and also, that's recorded, it's a permanent record, it's recorded on a, on a hard drive, so if I need to review any phone call, any radio traffic, all the lines from every, every single bit of communication coming in and going out of the dispatch center is recorded. And we can take that, we'll get, we'll get a request from law enforcement agencies and law offices, most typically, and some other government agencies, for recording, and I'm able to burn it to a disk and provide that for them.
Great.
Yeah. And our computers, each of the two primary stations have four computers and five monitors. They were placed in 2011. We always have to keep an eye on those, because they, they're running 24/7, and as Michael King would tell you, that, you know, that's harder on them. But, so far, so good. Everything's working. We have a third station, that's, when you walk into dispatch, you'll see the two, two stations that have their back to the wall. That's for NCIC and IDAX. It's by law, you can't have it be used visible by someone just walking in the door, because of the sensitive information on the screen. Our third console is used for training, it doesn't have NCIC and IDAX on it. It's used for training, and we can also use it in an emergency as a call center. Like, if myself or Kelly needs to run across the, run across the hall because the volume's too high, the volume as in call volume, not the audible, we can go over there and take calls, and write them down, and give them to the dispatcher dispatch out. So that's a handy thing to have, too. We also have one computer and one monitor in the, in the Director's Office, that's hooked up to the Equiture system, the recording, our recording software, and then we have two laptops. Everbridge notification system, you're aware of that, I'm sure. It's a mass notification system for school closing, roads closing, boil water advisories, volunteer fire. They get an Everbridge on every, every dispatch that goes out, volunteer fire gets that as a supplemental way of communication. Fire gets them also, EMS can get them, police, police officers, the Police Department uses them, usually that's generated by Robbie Fee, for SWAT callouts, or, or training. We would send out the SWAT callout, but he would send out training, interdepartmental stuff. So it's, it's a handy system to have, that or a system like it are good, good systems to have. Very good news on training, starting January first, training and recertification. Indiana 911 is our oversight agency, it's a quasi-governmental agency, that is our oversight and reporting agency. And they pay, they're now paying for certifications and recertifications. I just, I got confirmation yesterday that it's not just recertifications, but certifications. We just submit them the invoice, and we get either, I've not done a direct invoice to them yet, but, but we, we just submitted an invoice to be reimbursed for two certifications, and this can, this can add up to some money over the years. We did an estimate that, if you average it all out, because it's cyclical, certifications and recertifications, you're not really sure who your certifications are going to be, because you don't know who's going to come and go. And so our, our certifications, that's more expensive at the front end, but, but our recerts, every two years, everyone has to recert on particular things, or EMD, Emergency Medical Dispatch. And another good thing out of that is, we're able to, we're going to be able to up the training and certifications of all our dispatchers across the board, because now we're going to get it paid for. So our goal is to get them, there are three certifications, NCIC, IDAX, that's free, power phone, Emergency Medical Dispatch, which helps them, it's essential, because they have to be qualified in it, but also it helps them to walk someone through any medical call, someone calls and someone's not breathing, you go through a process and walk them through CPR, things like that. And then lastly, the one that only the full-timers have now, but the part-timers need, is called AppCo Telecommunicator One. And what it is, is a comprehensive, full-scale dispatcher certification. So you, it covers almost everything generally, and it's a very good one to have. Before, because it's three hundred dollars or so, you know, it's just not possible that giving your part-timers that, because you never know when they're going to leave. But this, because the state has this budget now to cover them, it's a, it's a game changer. It's going to be very good. It's not a huge game changer as far as our budget, because, you know, we're saying it's about three thousand dollars a year that we're going to save, if you average it out, but it is as far as our ability to certify people.
So, is it, are you saying then, it will be your policy from here on out, that the part-timers will have all of the same certifications as the full-time?
That's the goal. That's the goal. Now, that certification is a, is a four-week certification to get it done, and then, if, it's, it's a process, and it's, it's like taking a college course.
But it's online?
But it's online.
In-house?
In-house, on, on the clock.
They're not going to have to travel?
Nope. It's right there, they just, they just go through it. And it also, if, in the event that one of those people becomes a full-timer, they have all their certifications at that point.
They can step right in.
They can step right in, and then make more money.
Yeah.
You know, a better wage that way. So that we don't have to, we don't have to wait then. Now, of course, this is going to take a little bit of time, I've got two in there, two people in it right now. I went through it, another person went through and completed it since the beginning of the year. We've got two done, two in progress, and then I'll just start working each one through.
And that, those will be reimbursable?
Yeah.
Costs this year?
Yeah.
For this year's budget?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
But we'll pay for them upfront, and they'll reimburse us, or?
I believe, I believe we're, yeah, that's right. We're, we can send them the invoice. We don't have to be reimbursed, which is wonderful.
Okay.
Yeah. That makes it very workable. And it's, you know, it started January one, so it's, so it's, but they're, you know, they're, they're, they're the state agency, and they're, they're, they know what they're doing, so it's, I believe it's, I believe it's been well thought out, it's going to work. Okay. So there, you see all the, the full and part-time dispatchers and what they receive. I think I've gone over that. The one I didn't speak of is National Incident Management System. I'm going to review that and make sure everyone's certifications are up to snuff. Mind you, need you a refresher. We also, we're doing a CPR recertification coming up.
Twenty-second.
The twenty-second of this month. So, all right, now for the stats. 911 call count and type, bear in mind, this is 911 calls. This isn't just, this isn't, this isn't our total calls, these are all just 911 calls. In 2017, nine thousand three hundred nineteen 911 calls total, or wireless, sorry. And last year, we had ten thousand two hundred ninety-five. There's a, it's less, but you never know from week to week and day to day, we might have more this year, you just don't know. Four, four hundred and seven of these calls were NSI, NSI calls. They were from wireless phones that aren't in service. It's, if you have a cell phone that's charged, you can call 911 on it, whether you have a contract on it or not. And so, four hundred and seven of those were those calls. Very, it's a very good thing to have. Were some of those little kids picking up a cell phone and dialing 911? Probably. But were they people that really needed help? Probably, also. Traditional wired business and home phones, we had thirteen hundred eighty-nine 911 calls. The year before, fifteen hundred sixty-eight. Voice-over-internet protocol, that's internet phones. This year, or last year, five hundred twenty-seven. The year before, five hundred forty. Text to 911 center, in 2017, we had forty-one. Last year, there wasn't, you weren't able to generate that data the year before, because it's fairly new. So that's text to the 911 center. Someone who initiated a text first for help, and then text from, that's the communication that goes back and forth, from the 911 center to the person who's texted, who's texted for help. So there were ninety-seven of those. So our grand total of 911 calls is eleven thousand, was eleven thousand three hundred seventy-three, and 2016, twelve thousand four hundred ninety-two.
What was 2016?
2016 was twelve thousand four hundred ninety-two. Bear in mind that those numbers, you know, that there's a, there's a kind of a urban legend within dispatch and police circles, and that the full moons and different things will make the numbers go up or down, so you just never know what's going to happen. 2017 incidents that we, we dispatched, Connersville Police Department, twelve thousand eight hundred sixteen calls. Sheriff's Department, four hundred, four thousand eight hundred nineteen. Fayette County EMS, four thousand, four thousand seven hundred thirty-eight. Connersville Fire Department, one thousand five hundred and twenty-three. Glenwood Fire, one hundred and eighty. Everton Fire, four hundred and eighty-five. Bentonville Fire, one hundred and eighty-three. So the total incidents, nineteen thousand one hundred and twenty-four. And the reason the math doesn't add up is because some of those calls were taken by multiple agencies. You'll have a fire call that Everton responds to, or you'll have a police call that EMS responds to, and, and, you know, infinite mixture of agencies, so that's where you get a little bit of the, if you add up all those calls, they don't, they add up to more than, than the total incidents. And then there's a printout on the very back. If you wanted to look at every single, on the very back, there's a packet that shows every single department and their calls, and the nature of the calls. The budget, our 1222 fund, that's a statewide, statewide 911 call. They collect fees from all cell phones to fund 911. Our balance, in January 2017, one hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars eighty-six cents. December 2017 balance, ninety-seven thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-five. The forty-nine twelve statewide 911 city share, that's contributed by the City of Connersville. The January balance, January 2017 balance, eighty-eight thousand one hundred forty-five dollars and forty-one cents. And the December 2017 balance, one hundred fifteen thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. And there's a... The January balance, January 2017 balance, 88,145.41. And the December 2017 balance, 115,214.68. And there's a very helpful, the report we send to the state is in there with you. There's a very helpful, uh, Excel spreadsheet that explains a lot of it. I brought Kelly with me in case you had a detailed questions about the budget. Cause she hit, she's the one that helped work that up. She worked up the, the numbers. She didn't help, she did it. The very last page, is this an explanation of the standard surcharge and the prepaid wireless surcharge? How the money comes into that statewide 911 fund? Then you'll also see, there's a graph, a graph of the, the data I've already told you about. And the rest of the stuff, just, uh, printouts of the calls. Any questions about that?
I've got a question for you. These, uh, funds you get through Walmart, you go get that little card to renew your service every month?
Yeah.
Is there a percentage of that that comes to the 911?
Yes. Yes. That's the surcharge. There's a, the surcharge can go up. I talked to state 911 about them revisiting that. And they say that the, the Indiana legislature is not going to revisit that until 2020. Because people are looking for an increase because operating costs obviously always go up. And, uh, you know, we're-
2020?
Yeah.
So otherwise they're not going to address it?
Not, yeah, maybe.
Cause that's not a budgetary year. That's a short session.
Yeah. I maybe, yeah. How about that? You know, I'm researching-
They'll have to address it next year.
I'm researching if we can increase it in some ways because it, uh, we're, we're projected to have a shortfall, uh, by this time next year. So I, I submitted to you some things probably for next meeting that show the ways that we're trying to economize and come up with some extra money. If we do everything we need to do, we, we, we've come up with a quarter, 20, about 25% of, of the shortfall. We've, we've economized and have found ways to, to, to save that much money so far. So we're, we're continually working on that. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
While you're there, I want to thank the Glenwood and Bentonville Fire Department for going to my son's house last week. They also had Raleigh there. So they had a crowd on the corner of 800 North and Rush County, N County Line Road.
Thank God.
Yes. They got the fire out pretty quick. There's a lot of smoke damage. There really wasn't fires, flames, it was just a lot of smoke and bad gas. But I appreciate the departments going. Appreciate the work you guys do. Thank you very much.
I have one other item of new business. I'd like to present this, uh, resolution to the commissioners for their consideration. It's a resolution regarding, uh, the potential purchase of another EMS facility. The city is currently looking at. It states, whereas the Fayette County Commissioners recognize the importance of the facility currently being used as Fayette County EMS, uh, and whereas the current EMS facility was built by the community and for, uh, the community's use. And whereas the Fayette County Commissioners recognize the current EMS facility may be in need of updating and modernizing and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Fayette County, Indiana, that the Fayette County Commissioners do not deem it necessary to purchase a new facility for EMS use. This resolution shall be in effect, or shall be effective upon passage and shall remain in effect until Fayette County Commissioners rescind said resolution.
I'll move to accept the resolution.
I'd second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jane, can we send a copy of this resolution to the city?
Yes.
So they can be aware of it.
We're going to sacrifice the messenger.
No, I'll not sign this.
You have, you can choose not to vote for it, but you have to sign it, don't you?
No, if you don't vote for it, you don't have to. I don't think so.
Okay. I did not know that.
I'll move to approve the claims and payroll, but I'd also like to make it so that from now on that we sign during the meeting instead of after because of the way that, uh, the public could perceive that we're, uh, we're hanging on.
I'll second the motion. Payroll and claims?
Yeah.
Been moved and seconded that we sign all the paperwork before we adjourn the meeting.
And approve, and approve.
And approve.
The claims.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I said three.
Yes. Three ayes.
Got a question for you. How many signatures do you need on this resolution? How many signatures?
Two.
We're just one.
Yes.
There you go, Jane.
Could you start a copy of the ordinance?
Purchasing? No.
Are you going to not sign all?
This is the ordinance for, uh, probably to be conveyed to EDG. This is ordinance for the EDG.
Oh. Weren't you going to sign it, Carrie?
Uh-uh.
Oh?
That's down. Colin, do you have some time today?
Maybe a few minutes after me.
Did the Glenwood presenter?
Entrance?
Not yet.
I want to hold that, those claims up until?
I have a permit to claim.
Jane, has things settled back down over there? You're probably almost back in the groove, huh?
I'm a cop. I do need to ask you something.
Colin, do we need to talk about the appraisals?
I don't know.
We have them both now. Do you need to talk with the owner?
However you want to do it. I mean, does he know what the appraisal are?
No. We shouldn't have them. And we're almost in the cycle. It's 96.
So we need to just let him know? I would, and then?
Do you want to look that contact?
I can. Can you give me that information?
Yeah. I can give it to you after you meet.
How much did you say?
Actually, Jane brought up that, um, the ordinance we're asking would require unanimous consent. First time we read it, so we may have to read it a second time.
The other appraisal was 93.6.
That'll also give me time to draft a quick grant for it as well, too, so I don't look out.
So without unanimous vote, it takes three readings?
Two readings.
Two?
Well, the first one's already done. And then the second may have to be enough if it's not unanimous, so it still passes. As long as it has a majority. But the first one has to be unanimous.
What makes it different from city government? Needing to go three readings?
Well, you can, the county itself can rules from one reading. City may have done that.
Oh, okay. All right.
But generally the, the city, it's a big difference.
The second appraisal is 93.6.
If you got all of it, it's great. Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that.
I was reading this.
And I went down on camera because I got a golden hill.
Okay, okay.
So I went on camera, I was right.
I'm warm. And Leota, you will need to sign that, that resolution. Even though you didn't vote for it, it needs to be signed.
Have I already handed the key down?
No, you didn't say the Jane was right part.
Jane was right.
So do I need to sign the ordinance?
I believe so, yeah. Since you're here. The vote is part of the record.
Are the signatures muted until presented?
Yeah, yeah. Technically it's not passed until we have-
So really we shouldn't sign the ordinance at all yet?
We don't, I mean-
Cause it's not-
It's not been passed officially, Rick, you're right. But when you, when it is, yes, you do need to-
Everyone's signed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And Jane, when it comes to advertising, it is solely when there's a penalty involved. Unless there's a specific state, that statute, so we're okay.
Okay. Good, thank you.
I do, I think so. All right, they put people in our teeth.
Good luck with that.
Yeah. Fair, fair. We just will take them. Yeah. They can build their own.
He was talking, he ain't got no money anyways. He don't know, he said, we're going to fire, we're going.
He wanted to look over it.
According to my calculations, we were about $40,000 on the rent last year. If you add that to that, that's the deficit in this fund. This, this is a minus. And this is a plus in this. I don't understand, why don't we zero this out? I have no idea. Shouldn't we use zero? Shouldn't we shift on some budgetary things for this budget?
Especially when she, seeing where the calls come from. They're a lot higher than we are.
How do we get, you know, how do you convince the city that we need more money when you don't? So probably we need to talk to people about trying to reason some other, get this, some of this budget transferred out, you know, spend it out of here.
So on that 901 thing, is what we need to go to the... What's wrong with putting up a herd of something like that? They got room outside if you're big dad for an entrance or something. I can't understand why I would buy that thing. Oh, yes. We don't expect that.
But do we still talk about it before?
Yeah. Well, actually, we probably will, because you don't have to...
We can approve it.
And all that, too. Especially when you got your money. Hell, we're only 23, you didn't, what the hell?
Let's spend a little more. So does Warren by Senator James have something for us?
Well, Jane, I'm totally confused. He needs to ask for $300,000 for the community corrections for our portion or something. But she's gonna ask the advertiser, but he can ask us to...
To start the advertising, yeah.
Yeah, to advertise or whatever.
No, I think Warren's got something.
Warren? If you will please, maybe stop in and turn, we need you to ask us about the money and then we advertise for it.
Okay. I got these plans for paving project this year for a community crossings grant. I figured out we need about 300,000 for local share, 25 percent. And that's what I wanted to know if we could go in front of the council for that amount of local road and street.
That'd be local road and street.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get that from there.
Okay, that's okay.
So...
Jane will have to advertise, and then it'll be the March meeting before we can ask council for it.
And this is the way the council wanted to do it, rather than, so we'd know a closer number.
Okay.
'Cause I, I think Richard and I talked to him, didn't we talk about that during the budget hearing? And they kinda wanted to wait until we had a more solid number, so...
Okay. Well, I got a pretty solid number.
Yeah.
We know what the state will give us, but they won't give us the money until we get a contract.
Exactly.
So...
This is what this is.
We're gonna advertise, I think, starting the next meeting.
Can we approve it the next, wait till, so we can read through it?
Yeah, if you read through it and see if there's any comments you want to change.
I got a question.
Okay.
On this milling, it says two inches?
Yes.
Is that gonna be, have to be two inches, or is it flexible according to what's under there?
You can do an inch and a half if...
My concern is the two inches.
Hit the base.
No.
If we hit the base.
I wanna, most of our pavement is two inches or less.
Yeah.
And we're taking it down to the mud, basically. We had trouble last year with the Everton Road project. We had to have a recall or a warranty work done, so to speak.
They did extra work.
Change order on that, because of that. You know, they did the same thing up here on Waterloo Road. We laid a really good base back when I was commissioner before, and then we turned around and took it all back off.
This is only for the approaches. I'm not going, just like 100 feet reach into the bridges and at the end and beginning projects, intersections.
But it's been suggested to me that possibly we address our milling to maybe just scarfing, fire, what's that word?
Scarfing.
Just take it off, rough it up enough, and add new asphalt sticks to...
You could do it an inch and a half, there won't be too much change in price. You're gonna have two inches overlay, so are we gonna have a thinner overlay at that approach?
No, I keep... Oh, I don't have a problem with the approach.
Yeah, I'm not doing anything besides approaches and intersections.
Oh, you're not doing any milling except for intersections and...
And approaches to bridges and, well, like on Alcuana Road, where Bridge 82 on 150 East, we go on, they have new asphalt there, it's only five years old. So you stop and start again. Well, I was gonna mill 100 feet before and after.
And that's all the milling?
Just tie it in, nothing else.
Okay, that, are we on the same page then?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's just two inches?
At the...
We can make it an inch and a half?
No, 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 I don't mind there, because normally those bridges, bridge approaches, we put a good base down when the construction is done.
Yeah.
But where we got into trouble last year, we took two inches off of everything.
Yeah, they tried to straighten the crown out too much.
And, you know, at the very most, if we're gonna do millings on the whole, all mileage, at the very most, we just need to scarfire.
It's a lot less than last year. I mean, it's just 100 foot at the beginning, 100 foot each approach, the bridges, except one bridge that are closer to Alcuana on that curve, I think it's 86, I'm gonna, it's got that much asphalt on top of the bridge. So I'm just gonna take it off and replace it. All the bridge, whatever it takes to smooth it. So all the bridge decks, I'm not gonna add anything for takeoff, other than that one bridge.
But we can, we can, we have time to read through this and...
Yeah, for next meeting.
And approve it next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we can advertise, and then open bids March 20th.
The additional appropriation will need to be advertised by February 12?
I'm sorry?
The additional appropriation request will need advertised by February 12, so you'll have to decide on that part.
Today, yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, 300,000 would cover our 25 percent, a little extra in case. Just 287,000 would be 25 percent of the grant.
Okay.
So I rounded it up with 300,000.
That'll give us a little better change orders or whatever, yeah.
In case. Now, I have six structures on culverts on Alcuana Road, yeah.
Okay.
So the biggest, smallest is 12 inch, the biggest is 48 inch. There's a 42 either east Alcuana, that property just sold in 715 and then 18.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are going from the city limits to the county line?
Yeah, on Alcuana.
And the city is coming on into State Route 1?
I don't know if city is.
I think that's what Diana told me.
Okay.
They're working, oh, most of theirs is in East Conneville this year.
So with Diana, I think Diana tried to coordinate with the city where all of ours were gonna end off and try to complete any city portions to a highway, so that'll be a great thing, that it'll be continuous.
I hope we get good bids like last year.
Yes, I do, too.
You see, I've had a couple contractors acquire already.
Okay, good. Madam President, I would make a motion to allow Jane to advertise for an additional appropriation under the local road and street to, for 300,000 dollars that will be used for match money for community crossings grant for paving programs. I'll second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
So we'll be in time for the March meeting, right? Okay, great.
And then on timing, I would, on the construction, we wouldn't give them notice proceed till like the June 1st, and they do the pipes first, and then June 30th, they could start the paving till, and then in October 1st, so give them plenty of time. You know, it takes two, three weeks, I think, to do the project.
So, so we wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to start the pipes any sooner than June 1st, then?
Well...
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'd wanna pay, if they get the pipes done, then I could pay it out of our matching share, and if we haven't got our grant yet, they, they won't give us the grant till we get a contract. So...
And you have to have all those in by the 15th of April, right?
Yeah, so I gotta have the bids, accept a bid.
An accepted bid by April 15th, right?
Yeah, sign contract.
Oh, sign contract, okay.
So off March 20th, we can award a bid then, and start the signed contract in by April 15th.
Okay, great.
And then, but then I'm gonna give them time, I gave them a lot of leeway on time, and then I didn't wanna have Alcuana Road closed during school, so I started June 1st, gave them a month, about June 3rd, two months, actually, do the pipe. And then they get paid till October 1st, and they should get done by then.
Dale, do you have, do you have any questions or any problems with that additional request?
No, I've been waiting for a hard number, and it seems to have gone, and now come to the conclusion 300,000 is the number, so we will take care of that in March.
Okay, good.
Jane's gonna get it advertised, and you'll get approved, and we'll be able to get the bids, and should have them presented by the 3rd of April, so we can get the things to end off by the 15th. Thank you.
And Warren, I really appreciate you addressing that milling issue.
Well, Alcuana Road has a lot of base under it already, so... I put in some wedging in there so we can use wedging to level out more than...
Get some levels.
About 200 tons.
Okay.
One for Sykes Road, 200 tons, and then the east of Alcuana, I think, it needs some leveling, so I put some, 200 tons in each, instead of milling the wedgie.
Sykes Road's one of them that was hit with that bad thawing freeze last year, that they had one great big mud hole out there on the curb out there, where there was no pipe top left, so we had to work on that one. All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Sarah.
I'll move adjourned. Second?
Good move and second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.